The Planning Commission meeting for March 11th, 2013 is called to order. And our major item on the agenda tonight is PC 13-016 or 18, the Transportation System Plan Update. And tonight is a work session, so we're really introducing this plan to the public. And we're gonna, after the speaker has made his presentation, will give the public an opportunity to make brief comments or ask questions for the record. And because of the number of people that we have tonight and the amount of material to cover, we're gonna adhere to the three-minute-per-person limit on speaking time. So we'll go ahead and get into our presentation. John?
Thank you, Commissioner Kidwell and all of you for having us. I'm John Lewis. I'm the Public Works Director. I don't think I've been before this body since I've been Public Works Director, so it's nice to be here and thank you for having us. We've got, tonight we're presenting our Transportation System Plan, which I always refer to as the Bible of the city's, when it comes to the city's transportation network. It's a long-term guide. It's a 20, and the plan is scheduled, it's a look ahead to 2035. It talks a fair amount about our transportation investments and our vision for the Transportation System as we move forward. I'll introduce some of our project team. So Carl Springer's with DKS and Associates, and he's, he and his staff have really done the lion's share of the work that goes into this Transportation System Plan. They're the transportation experts in the region. They were selected through a selection process that was strenuous, I would say, and they did a good job with that. We decided to go with them. We've worked with DKS on several other projects as well. So the other project participants from staff level are Laura Turway and Christina Robertson-Gardner. Some of you might remember Nancy Crushauer. She had a fair amount of involvement in this early on, and I've kinda stepped in when she left. ODOT representative is Gail Curtis, and she's not here tonight, but she's also been pretty heavily involved. So I just wanted to talk a little bit before Carl jumps into this, 'cause he's gonna go over several slides, but I wanna go over some of the public involvement efforts to date, just because I think it's important for the Commission to hear, and I think it's important for the audience to hear as well. There's been a couple of different committees. There's a Stakeholder Advisory Team that has met four different times throughout this process, and we had, I don't remember the number of members on that, but we sent invitations to participate on that committee, to several, including the Transportation Advisory Committee, Parts and Recreation Advisory Committee, Historical Review Board, Natural Resource Committee, Planning Commission, Clackamas County, Oregon City School District, Citizen Involvement Council. And each of those meetings has been open to the public as well. We've also had a Technical Advisory Team, which was a slightly different makeup. It's more of the agency people. Clackamas County, again, was invited, Metro, ODOT, City of Gladstone, Oregon City Planning, Oregon City Conservation, I don't know, Oregon City Development, Oregon City Public Works, Department of Land and Conservation District, Clackamas County Fire District, TRIMET, freight organizations. And again, all of those meetings were open to the public. And we had three of those meetings. We've been providing committee updates. I think I've understood from Laura that this committee's been updated several times. We've also been doing that for Historical Review Board and the Natural Resource Committee and the City Commission. So those groups have been getting updates as we've been moving along. And to be honest with you, I've seen a lot of familiar faces in, from those kinds of groups at a lot of our open houses and other committee meetings. So speaking of open houses, we have had four of those. Our last one was on March 7th. We've had good, I would say, good turnout for those, but not overwhelming, depending on how nice the evening was. Some of those were better attended than others. But at each of those meetings, we've had comment cards, we've had poster boards with maps and post-it notes for people to write comments and stick them right on the spot where their concern is at. Lot of face-to-face conversations, and of course, cookies and refreshments are always served, and I have heard no complaints about the cookies.
Why'd you look at me?
Lots of outreach from other organizations. We've gone to neighborhood meetings and posted a lot of, we've got, we've made posters and placed them around town to announce various meetings and announce the process, mainly announce the city's website. We've had utility bill inserts. We've mailed postcards, which I suspect, this is the entire TSP, I think. If you get, if you get close enough, you can actually.
Back to playing games.
This, I understand from Laura that, you know, this is language that is provided to the city from the state about these kind of notices, and sometimes it's a little hard to read, but, and other times it's a little bit concerning when you say it affects your property. And so we've gotten a fair amount of response, but, you know, to the credit of these things, it's helped bring some attention to a very important topic, which is this Transportation System Plan. So we've sent out a lot of those. Our utility bill inserts have gone out in the May, October, and February bills. And our website is another key feature that's been used throughout this project, and it's got a lot of hits and a lot of comments. It's available to actively make comments for a particular project, and so all of those comments have been vetted through this process as well. Also have Facebook and Twitter. So seems like a pretty aggressive effort with regard to public involvement, and most of that's been led by Laura Turway. So, thank you.
Where is Laura? She's actually helping us, it is an outside.
Okay, great. So with that, I think I'll turn it over to Carl, who's gonna talk through this presentation.
Good evening, Chair, council members, or commissioners. I'm Carl Springer, DKS Associates. I think I've been with, before you before, earlier in this process, to talk about where we've been. I think you've learned a lot as we went through this. Frankly, I put a few slides in here to provide a bit more background on what we've done, so that folks in the audience would get a better handle on some of that if they haven't been up to date on the process so far. I want to bring your attention to the fact that we're gonna be back next week. So tonight is really focused on the TSP documents itself and its outcomes, and the next Monday night is really more about the code changes that go along with the TSP update. So we'll try to break it up in those two pieces. So what I've done on the slides that I have for you is kind of a high-level overview of the TSP itself, and it breaks out kind of into those eight pieces, with the ninth being the next step. Some of this, again, like I said, should be familiar to you all, but for the audience, we can kinda walk through a little bit about what a TSP is and why we're doing it. So John brought up some of this background information, but the TSP that the city currently has looked out to 2020, I believe, and now we're going out to 2035. So we have to look at least 20 years beyond where we are today to really get a good assessment of how the city expects itself to grow and what kind of transportation needs it's going to have. A big piece of this update had to do with looking at the goals the city had related to transportation and trying to use those to develop metrics to basically score the projects that we're selecting to be funded. And that's a big piece of it. If you go out and look at the boards in the lobby, there's lots of maps and there's 300-some projects, but the minority of those are expected to be funded. A lot of those will not be funded based on the current streams that we've identified. Also should know that a Transportation System Plan covers all modes of getting around, whether it be walking, biking, busing, horse driving, trucks, neighborhood issues, trails and the like. So this has been a process that's gone on since, I think, if I'm not wrong, John, it's the summer of 2011 is when we started this.
I think you're right.
Something like July. I remember it was a little bit hot when we started this. So we've been doing this for quite some time now. As you can see, the process, this is the technical stages that we go through. Look at other plans, your current plan, look at the way things work today, the way they're gonna work tomorrow, and what's broken, what's not, and then go through a process of coming up with solutions, scoring them, and then recommending changes. So we're at the very last box there. I should acknowledge that a lot of the work that was done in the prior TSP was carried forward into this TSP. This is not a new, a whole new document. The biggest emphasis was on, a lot more energy on bike and ped-related projects, and then on, like I said, on the prioritization, the scoring of the projects, so we could get an idea of what's floating up to the top. So we didn't cast off what you have before. A lot of that, a lot of those projects were carried forward. John went through a lot of this already, so I'm not gonna go into detail, but there was a large technical piece, total of 12 memos. Those are all available on the city's website. We had the stakeholders, the agency committees, community meetings, 10,000 postcards went out. And then, of course, the documents itself is up on the website. Volume one is where the bulk of the material is. That's the maps, the relevant narrative. Volume two is really a technical document, and you don't have that before you tonight 'cause we were talking with staff about whether or not that's something you really wanted to have, because it is 410 pages of technical goodness. And I guess if you all, commissioners, express an interest in that, I'm sure we can make that available to you. But that as well is available online as a PDF. You can download that and look through that. So here we are, going into the adoption process. So let's start with the first item, the vision for the system. There's a pragmatic approach to the TSP this time around, and it's not, like the old one isn't pragmatic, but the piece that we're adding to it, again, is prioritizing, looking for the smaller, less costly, more efficient projects, and then going through a balancing process, how we're gonna actually pay for these things. So you're familiar with the diagram on the right, where we kinda went through a, we're starting with, well, how can we, can we start with managing the system better? Can we provide better travel choices? Can we do things that aren't looking at major investments and major projects, which are the category down toward the bottom? So we spent a lot of energy on that, and you could see, if you look, if you compare the list between the current TSP and the new TSP, there's a lot more definition on things like crossing, roadway crossing projects, bike projects, trail projects, and walking projects than you had in the old TSP. So those are the goals for the TSP. I'll list them there. I'm not gonna read them to you. I think you're pretty familiar with them. But the ones that came up towards the top were the health and safety of the residents, the emphasis of effective and efficient systems, and fostering a sustainable system in all the meanings that are sustainable. Sustainable is an interesting word, has many dimensions these days. So sustainable, the way we've looked at it, is sustainable in terms of funding and maintenance, is sustainable in terms of it'll help you as a, as a, as a community thrive better. Those kinds of principles all apply. There's lots of different dynamics to that. So as we had our projects developed through the, through this, we came up with metrics for each of those eight, and then we went through a scoring process. And I think we had a workshop here six, nine months ago. We kinda walked you through that, so you got a taste of it. So all those 360 projects that are out there on the board, we came up with a score for each one and ranked them. So a little bit about trends. Now, the way transportation forecasting goes, it's not something that's done in a vacuum. It's done based on how the city is expected to grow. And this, this diagram shows, based on your current comprehensive plan, where the growth is expected to occur, and it's somewhat schematic, so I'll explain a little bit. So between the year 2010 and 2035, we've got the green bubbles, which are the job growth bubbles, up in the Park Place area, and then down in the Beaver Creek area, concept plan area, is where the majority of the job growth is expected in the city in that period. In terms of housing growth, those are the red dots, and the larger the dot, the more the growth. So you've got, again, down in the south, toward the south end area, and over there off of Maple Lane are the two biggest dots, aside from that little small dot up there by Park Place. So interestingly enough, you know, a significant amount of the future growth is gonna occur a little bit at the city's edge. There is a fair amount of infill as well, but that's the growth that's predicted. And so our job is to look at, as those growth, as that growth happens, if that happens the way it's predicted, how will that affect the systems that you have, and what, if any, changes might be needed to those systems to make them work well, as you like.
Carl, just.
Yes, John?
We had a little confusion with this slide at the last meeting I was at.
Okay.
So, you know, where the dots sit, they kind of are centered on a, on an area.
Oh, you're right.
So just because you see a dot maybe that sits right on top of your home or your business.
That doesn't necessarily mean that we're gonna demo things and bring in a bunch of
new jobs. This is really about centering the dot over the centroid of the area that it represents.
Yeah, that's a good point, John. So these are, these are broken out by these geographic ways that we break up the city, and they're called analysis zones. And so, for example, down here at the south end, there's a zone, this fat gray line runs around that whole zone. So the growth that we're showing there includes the existing neighborhoods, plus there's quite a bit of vacant land on the edge. And so the growth is occurring in the vacant land, right? You're not redeveloping the neighborhoods, just to be clear, if you're a neighbor living in that neighborhood and you're sitting behind me, we're not talking about demoing your house. I think, John, you might live in that neighborhood, so, maybe, maybe I'm off a little bit there. I don't know. But that's the idea. It's representative of a larger chunk of that, of the city. It's not, it's not indicative of where the dot's actually sitting. Does that help?
That's better.
Okay. So same with Beaver Creek, 'cause Beaver Creek's this, this whole area down here. So that green dot represents that entire area. And same with this, this is the regional center. Regional center technically is, is quite large, but that dot happens to be sitting in just one piece of that. All right. This doesn't show very well in this color, but this is a differential in traffic speeds, or no, it's traffic growth. And so the darker lines, the red lines, show where the most growth is expected. So Beaver Creek Road, Highway 99, 205, and then parts of, I think that's Redland Road that I see, right? That's where the largest growth is expected, relatively speaking. Not to say that there isn't growth on the existing city streets, but this is an increment of growth. That's what this is trying to portray. So in terms of operating conditions, we haven't gone into that much in this presentation, but there's a way that traffic engineers can measure how well the system is functioning in terms of how much delay it's taking to move through that point. The red dots here in this diagram show intersections where the current standard will not be met. You've got a cluster down here at Beaver Creek Road in 213. You've got clusters up here around 205 and 99, and then they're kinda spaced around. To be clear, the dots represent intersections where we were kinda doing a more detailed review. We didn't analyze every intersection in the city. We had a couple dozen intersections that we looked at in detail, and so we're only showing the findings on those. So on to changes, and I'll just touch these briefly as an introduction, then I've got a few diagrams just behind it. The notion of a complete street, as somebody in, as a planning commissioner would probably be familiar with that term, it's recognizing that there's all kinds of elements between the building faces on either side of the streets that need to be considered when you're designing a street. So we, we break them out into these zones that are described here, walking zones, biking, parking, driving, and what's called a context zone. And we provided guidance on how those could be applied, depending on the functional class of the street and what land uses are next to the street. And so it gives a little bit more complete picture about what the opportunities are there. We're in the process now of taking that information and getting it ready to be in your development code. So as, as things redevelop, as projects come online, those kinds of standards could be applied. The family-friendly bike routes, that is a network of connections that are giving people who ride and walk a bit, bit of a break. You know, we, in my early years when I was doing TSPs in the 90s, we focused on sidewalks and bike lanes on the arterial system. We thought we were doing a great thing by getting bike lanes on the arterial system. Come to find, only the most aggressive bike guys like to ride on arterials. The rest, really not so much. And so what we need to find is an alternative to that for, you know, family members, for example, that aren't comfortable taking their small children out on arterial. So this is, this is a network of slower speed, lower traffic volume connections. It's largely guided by, you know, wayfinding routes and signing and striping and that kinda thing, as opposed to big physical improvements. And I'll have pictures in a minute to show you what that looks like. It's kind of a different class of a route. It's not, it's not in place of the other, but it's in addition to. There's a couple other things that we'll talk, I think, more in the next meeting, about parking issues and then mobility targets. We'll get into that more in depth then. So the multimodal street system or complete streets, this is just a diagram that's in the TSP. You can see the functional classes and the comprehensive plan designations next to it, and there's a, once you have that information, what, what the functional class of the street is, whether it's an arterial, a collector, or a local, you can go to the tables and look up what the pieces of the puzzle are, how large the sidewalk should be, if you should have turn lanes or not. Those kinds of parameters will be laid out for you. It's a bit, you know, the interesting thing about Oregon City is it's largely built, and so a lot of this applies really to the newer areas, and some of that's already been concept planned. I know there's a concept plan underway in the south end area. So these has some more utility there, but as things get redeveloped or as projects can come along, then those can be used there as well. So in terms of a zone, just a simple diagram of what the zones make sense. So walking on the outside, you've got the walking, biking, driving, and then it repeats itself on the other side. So depending on where you are and what class of facility is will determine whether or not you have multiple lanes, whether you allow on-street parking. It used to be the case that arterials in general would be discouraged for having on-street parking. And we're saying, well, if you have an arterial with a retail along the front of it, maybe on-street parking's not such a bad idea. And you have to think about, A, if you have the space for it, and B, what your, what your trade-offs are to do that. So this is just giving this, I think the way to look at this from my point of view is it gives the city more flexibility on dealing with issues that, in the context of the land uses along the street, and not just strictly one-size-fits-all, cross-section for all collectors and all arterials. I think, I think generally it's a good thing at the implementation level. Couple pictures on the family-friendly streets, so named. So you've got these downtown. These are, you know, the jargon for these. These are called cheros, or sharing the lane with the bikes. And you've also got route-finding signs and directional signs, 'cause we don't trust that people are gonna come in and look at the map in your TSP to decide where you're gonna go. We're gonna try to make that evident on the ground, and hopefully, you know, that over time, the city can do an education piece and get the neighborhoods to understand where those routes are and where they're not. But that's the intent of that, is so in the end, you're gonna have, once this thing comes together, you're gonna have what we would describe as kind of a linear park system, where you're, you're away from the bigger, faster, higher-volume streets, but you can get from one part of the city to the other along this network of connections. Couple objectives for that kind of a street is to reduce, cut through traffic and make it safer for bike and peds, and to give improvements to cross the street when, when that makes sense over time. Again, these will, these will all be done incrementally over time, as funding allows. That is the map that describes that system. I don't think you're gonna be able to make that out at this scale from where you're sitting behind me, but there's a detailed one out on, out on the, in the lobby, if you wanna look at that in more detail.
The other thing is, the online version of this is really good. It's a PDF that you can zoom in on, and with it comes all the detail behind it. So if you really wanna study this stuff, the online version's excellent.
Yeah. So in terms of investments, this is a snapshot of the different categories. So on the left, we've got, you know, driving, walking, biking, shared use, transit, family-friendly, which we just discussed, crossing, which is a new category, again. For a grand total of 360 projects, about $220 million in tota, just dollars. You look at the wheel on the top, if you broke that out by those categories, if you just counted how many projects you had. Interesting to me that the crossing family, you know, the left half of that diagram basically are all bike and walking-related. Driving is really just a fraction, is a quarter of the total. But when you take the dollars involved, it flips around. The driving takes up three-quarters of the dollars, and the ped, bike, walking, transit access only take a quarter. To me, that's always been an interesting reality in transportation planning, is buying ped, bike, walking projects is, you know, it's an order of magnitude less than a standard roadway project. So in terms of where the funding's coming from, frankly, a lot of the funding's coming from growth. And if growth doesn't occur in a timely manner, a lot of those projects that are identified as likely to be funded won't be funded in a likely, a reasonably likely timeframe. You can see, out of the pie that we're looking at for funding, the majority of it is coming from SDC, that's the orange band. Some of it's coming from, you know, an unallocated piece that came from a gas tax increase about a year ago, that's the 14 million. So in terms of a shortfall, you've got about a shortfall of 98 million on our project list that can't be funded through growth means and through your current fee system. To be clear, we are not recommending increasing funding. We're not recommending a new program that dials those things up as a part of this, so if there's any concern in the audience about that, that's not something that's recommended through here. Certainly, the city has the option to initiate that on their own, and maybe they will at some point, but that's not a part of this. Just to make that more clear, you've got about $98 million of unfunded and about 14 million that's not committed yet. Frankly, that money traditionally has gone not to building capital projects, has gone to operation and maintenance, that 14 million. And gas tax monies typically go for that purpose as opposed to capital purposes. All right, the plan itself. So we've talked about this already, I don't wanna belabor it too much, but there's really two categories. There's what we call financially constrained, which is based on our estimates. There'll be money available over time between now and 2035 to construct these. And then there's the other category, which are planned but not funded. And so all the diagrams in the, in the lobby, look, make that distinction. So you've got projects that are labeled with the red letters, which means they're likely to be funded, and the white ones means they're not.
Or the other way around.
Well, white is planned, means they're not, and red is funded. Did I say it backwards? Sorry.
No, that's fine.
So there's diagrams for this, which is focused on intersections and management-type solutions. You can see there's, there's quite a few up and down South End Road and on Beaver Creek Road, and then a couple in the downtown area. These are planned street extensions, which really, for the most part, fall in, or derive from concept planning work that's already been done. So you've got the Beaver Creek area, all these street extensions down in here. Come on, cursor. All this stuff are, it's just a representation of the work that was done through the concept plan. These are not new street extensions that came out of this process. Same here, out of the Park Place process, those were identified. These were initially identified for the South End process, but that process is ongoing now, so that may change. So street and intersection expansions, kind of the last big category. Again, a lot of that, a lot of what's shown on this map are in those concept plan growth areas. So biking solutions, tough to read at this scale. Hopefully, go to the, go to the lobby, they get more clarity. But this distinguishes where the bike lanes are, where the street extensions would be. And the green line here, these are the family-friendly, asking for my cursor, there's my cursor. And the lime green is the family-friendly system overlaid on top of the bike lane system. So this says, if you don't wanna go on Warner Milney, you would prefer to go through a neighborhood, there's, there's options for you on a family-friendly route, as an example. And to get through the downtown area, there's, there's options there as well.
Carl, can you reemphasize the color of the number, the labels, just again?
As far as funding goes?
Yeah, funding, just keep emphasizing that.
Okay. Red, should've done green and red, but, 'cause green would be money and then red would be not money.
Red would be in the red.
It would've been, I would've been a little more. So money is red.
Uh-huh.
So if we think it's gonna be funded, it's shown up, the label for that project is shown in red. There's a table that's available that Laura put together that, if you look up on the map and it says, you know, Project B24, you can find what B24 is in that table, because way too much information, try to get on one map. I thought we kinda overloaded it, just to load it. I thought we kind of overloaded just a little bit on this one, there's a lot going on on this map.
I do think that the labeling is, is good for people to think about, too, the walking solutions are labeled W, the biking solutions are labeled B.
Yeah.
The driving solutions are D, so as you go to each one of these maps, you'll see the, the number changes, and when you look them on, up on a list, that list is organized by the, the different kinds of solutions, so it's another.
That's right.
Organization that I think is helpful.
Yeah. So, shared and walking, biking, so these are shared use projects, and on to outcomes. So, one of the last things that was unique about this plan, and it's consistent with what the regional plan is doing, and frankly, more and more metropolitan areas are doing, is they're, they're taking their transportation system plans and actually, not just going through a scoring process like we did, but actually testing to see what difference it makes, you know, so you kind of measure the outcome of the investment that you're discussing. And that is the last section of the volume one that you have available to you on your desk there. I just kind of grabbed a quick summary of that section, and so there's categories of safety, congestion, daily travel, and vehicle occupancy are all things that transportation planners are interested in. So safety is an area that people are interested in, but it's frankly, it's one of those things that's kind of hard to forecast, but given the kinds of projects that we're recommending and the standards that we've defined, we're expecting that safety will be improved, meaning not only the frequency of crashes, but the severity of crashes, because the, the big problem, usually severity has to do with speed differentials, and so as the more you can bring speeds down, the, the less severe crashes are. Congestion is usually measured in terms of delay, like if nobody was in my way, how quickly could I go through here versus how long it takes me with, on a, on a busy time of day. Should acknowledge that we didn't solve congestion on all the system, there was a number of locations on the state system where we could not meet their standard, and there's issues kind of outstanding to be dealt with through a separate process there. Again, through my years, there, there used to be a day when ODOT would require that you met their standard and develop a project to fix their, the problem to meet their standard, but it's, their policies have recognized that funding is not what it used to be 20 years ago, and so now we're doing things a little bit differently than we have. Interestingly, daily vehicle travel, so in the geeky description that is vehicle miles travel or vehicle hours of travel, that's actually going down over time, it has frankly gone down since about the year 2000. It's interesting to me that people, on average, drive less than they have in the past, and that trend will continue. And it's not unique to Oregon, although Oregon is one of the leaders in that situation. A vehicle occupancy is kind of an efficiency question, you know, how many people are you putting in a car on average, and we're seeing slight increases in that over time throughout the city, the only area where it doesn't meet it so well, based on our, our estimates, is in the regional center area, but overall in the city, it seemed to meet it pretty well. That's my last slide, I think I'll stop there, I don't know if you have any immediate questions, Cher, how you wanted to handle from here?
Before we get into public questions or comments, do the commissioners have any immediate questions?
Wait, I do have one more, but.
Do you want us to ask?
If, if you have.
Well, just something for us to discuss a little bit later, one of the things I noticed on your last slide, it talked about safety, and better crossings, tailored street types, and other travel choices, and I think something that we would need to, we should consider because we didn't do it by the book, 7th Street, we, I say we, citizens of the community, petitioned to have parking put back on there, it doesn't, it didn't meet the typical street standards and requirements that are in the manual, but we said, no, we feel that this street needs to function this way because it's a small neighborhood center in terms of its, you know, up and down from basically up by the school down to where it meets Washington Street, so there are things there that are sort of an anomaly, and it seems to be working. One of our big concerns with wanting that that way was the fact that we felt having the parking was going to help reduce vehicle speed, so a question that I want to talk about when we get to the Planning Commission is, how can we look at designing streets or retrofitting streets so that we help reduce speed? Because in Oregon City, and I'm sure you heard this at the TSP, and particularly in the McLaughlin neighborhood where I live, it's speed, 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 and speed. And if we could get people to slow down, it would make a great deal of difference, so I was glad to see on the chart that there were some suggestions about, you know, everybody says, let's put in a speed bump, let's, well, that's not exactly what we mean, but if we can increase the width of the pedestrian zone to give the illusion that the street is narrower, that would go a long way to helping reduce vehicle speed in this town. And one of the other things that our neighborhood has a big concern about is the speed of streets, particularly areas where they go from 35 to 25, and you see people, you know, they just don't even slow down.
Right.
So hopefully, some of the things that we can talk about may have to do with function that will help resolve some of these, I think the other thing that we need to do as a community is it needs to be a, how would I want to say this, it needs to be well-known that if you speed, you will get a ticket, because this is well-known in Lake Oswego, this is well-known in Westland, and in Oregon City, it's like, go as fast as you can, and if you get caught, well, you know, so what? So, you know, this is like, Mike Conrad, are you out there listening?
One other thing I wanted to say about the TSP before you get into more discussion is the, the nice thing about a TSP from the development side is as new development comes and is proposed, we have these same graphics that, or documents that we can refer to to place those requirements on the developers, so those, those are good things to have, if they're not in there, we can't require it, if it doesn't show a sidewalk, then we may not be able to require that, so just keep that in mind as well, even though it may not be shown as funded, it may be something that we can require, so.
Are there any other immediate questions or comments related to the presentation? Okay, thank you, Carl. At this time, we will take comments from the public, do we have comment cards?
We do not have any submitted.
There's some comment cards in the back, along the back table, and you can hand them to arterial.
Mr. Chairman, would you please reiterate to our esteemed colleagues that it is going to be three minutes, so, I know, but sometimes people don't pay attention to the timer.
Can we have forms up here?
So, as, as just another reminder, point of order, due to the number of people here tonight, and in conjunction with the fact that this is a work session, we will be limiting public comment to three minutes, so when, when you hear the beeper go off, I would appreciate your respect for that and discontinue your comments. And this is not the last opportunity, I'll just say that next meeting, and there will be at least two more meetings after that, you will have an opportunity to weigh in on, on this plan, so if we can limit time, that would be great, I'd appreciate that.
So, Cher, just to, just to clarify that, tonight is the Planning Commission's work session, we're going to have another Planning Commission work session on March 18th, and then we will actually be then kicking off the Planning Commission public hearings, which will be, the first one is March 25th, and then April 8th, then there'll also be, assuming it can get a recommendation from the Planning Commission, there'll be city commission public hearings as well, so there'll be multiple opportunities.
Right, so everybody will get several more kicks if they can before this is done. So the first comment card that I have is from Paul Edgar.
You're a lot smarter than me. Thank you, Chair and Commission members, I'm the Land Use Chair, I'm Paul Edgar, I'm the Land Use Chair of the Kanema Neighborhood Association, and much like Denise said in her discussion, it's all about speed, 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 we have a small, very narrow, 20 to 25 feet of asphalt, no sidewalks, and everybody is compelled to be in the streets. We would like to see speeds in Kanema reduced automatically to the 20 mile an hour speed zone signs and signed up, we'd like to see yellow slow signs of significance planted around the neighborhood, but we are an interconnecting area of the city that connects to the Kanema Bluff and the wilderness or the natural area. We need to ensure that our, our trail network and roads adapt to that interconnection need. It's growing, we have growing needs of bicycles, bicyclists coming through the area, and it's just, it's highly undulated, there's not a, very little visibility, and everybody's in the street. It's just not safe in any way, shape, or form, and we need to make sure that it's in the list, it's prioritized, and we just hope that someone doesn't get killed right in front of my house on 5th, what would be 5th and Ganong, kids come across through there, and sometimes I've seen kids, cars leave the ground where, where you can see under all the wheels, as they go over the top of this crown going down the hill, that's not, and they can't see. Everything is totally, you can't see anybody underneath there, so the, the critical issue is, again, knowing that we are an interconnected area with no sidewalks, no safety considerations, zero, we've got to do something about it, it's got to be planned out, thought out, and I'm not the trail designer or the road designer, all I am is the canary telling you that, that if somebody doesn't make a decision around here how to correct it, somebody's going to get killed. Okay? Then I would like to move on to the second one. I'm also coming before you, as a citizen, and I want to talk to you about an area that's very, very important, and that's South End Road. South End Road, I'm also on the Clackamas County Transportation Advisory Commission, Council, doing the TSP for the county. There's 10,000 trips a day that go down South End Road from Warner Parrot to Second and High Street. The, the South End Road sliding, it's in a, in a slide zone. It's narrow, and in all candor, the state or the county has put a ton of money into it, and it's still breaking off, it's still sliding, so there's not that much you can do with it, you can't widen it, it's just not fixable. So if we start expanding the incidence of travel in this corridor, like what is being proposed with the South End road concept plan, where we meet the county densities, the county densities requirements will put approximately 2,000 homes after we take out the natural areas or the wetlands into this area, and this is approximate numbers, because you can't get trucks up South End Road because of its weight-restricted status, it's difficult to envision that area having any commercial adaptability, retail or anything, because if they, in a, in this world of supply chain management, it just doesn't make sense. So, my problem here is that if we put these high levels of density out there, we, and 80% of the people currently in this area are leaving Oregon City to find employment, they go north, the only logical way to go north is on South End Road, so immediately, I've got the choke points at Warner Parrot in South End, and then on Second and High Street, and then the whole area in between is broken. So if I try to go south towards New Era in Canby, I slip down into the S-curves at the South End, and in slide zone areas, and it's broken. If I try to go east out of this area, I run into the canyons that are over, off of Part Low or whatever it is over.
U-Town.
Okay? So, what you look at is a problem area where you're trying to figure out what to do. Logic tells me that one of the things is, and I talked years and years ago about it with Nancy Crishour, about the critical need to creating an alternate route off of the bluff, and there's two roads that go straight to the bluff, one is Butteal, and the other is South Forest Ridge Lane. Those roads could, through canyons, and I've walked it, could connect down to Highway 99. If that happened, and we created a type of link up, we could really change the whole South End Road concept plan and its development opportunities.
Thank you, Paul.
My name is Christine Kozinski, I live in unincorporated Clackamas County, I really wasn't prepared to speak tonight, but I can't hold my tongue. A few months ago, citizens from Holly Lane came and spoke to you about the many problems created when city butts right up next to county. I might suggest that the city use more honey than vinegar when dealing with the people living in these areas. So far, the city has dished out a lot of vinegar. In your entire TSP, the people of Thayer, Maple Lane, Holly, and Redland are the most affected, they're going to be hammered, and yet you chose not to send them even a 20-cent You chose not to let them know how they would be impacted by the TSP. So much for your outreach and public involvement, and don't talk to me about health and safety, it won't exist here.
Thank you. The next speaker is Todd Last.
Good evening, I have a couple of things, first, I wasn't able to find.
Can you identify yourself?
Oh, sure, I always forget that part. My name's Todd Last, I'm a resident of the Tower Vista Association, and I like to call our neighborhood now the Big Red Circle, which is the, I have the largest circle there. And my question is, I wasn't able to find in the document, you talked about the growth projections, and I was curious, I know, I'm not aware that there's that much vacant land, but I know there are a lot of houses with, on acreage with large lots, and I was wanting to know if the population growth had assumptions about city rezoning, upzoning properties in that area. And then the other question I have is, I find it very curious that we have a thousand-plus home growth shown in that area, and yet if you look at the next slide that shows traffic impact, it's green, there's no traffic impact, and we've had a lot of growth in that area so far, and we're already seeing traffic increases on that, so I'm, it's kind of curious to me that it seems like maybe something was missed. The other point I wanted to make is, my favorite example being Pease Road, is as you look at the TSP plan, I hope that you'll consider the issue of retrofitting, because I think I, if I walk down Pease Road, I can probably say what year particular codes were in place, because we have a lot of different striping and sidewalks and lanes there, and it makes it look very unplanned, and I know that there are a lot of restrictions because of the way we do things, that, you know, there's a code in place as you do development, but it would be nice if we had some way to, you know, as we improve codes, make things better, to make it, roads be more holistic looking and not, you know, change as we go through. And that's all I have to say, thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other people in the audience wishing to make comments that have not made comments? Okay, and we'll close the public comment portion of this meeting.
Commissioner, I just want to look, if somebody wants to write written comments, there's a comment box on the back, and you can turn those in this evening as well.
Should we have Carl come back up, so? Should we have Carl come back up so he has an opportunity?
That'd be terrific.
Carl, maybe you can come back up and perhaps, first of all, you may want to address some of the comments that were made by the audience.
Well, Carl's getting sick. Could I ask Tony a quick question? Tony, in this document, is there a map that shows which roads are under city jurisdiction and which roads are under county jurisdiction? Because I think that is one of the, let's say, it's sort of a nexus of, an issue that some people have who are in parts of the city where we've got a county jurisdiction road and a city jurisdiction road, and it kind of goes in and out.
I don't believe that map is in there.
No, it's not.
But-
Good additions.
We've got that, we've got it in other places. I mean, when we did the existing additions evaluation, should be there. We just didn't carry it forward into the TSP itself, but it's a background. It's available.
So for example, let's say you had a road that was still under county jurisdiction, but inside the city limits.
Right.
And let's say it was able to be partitioned or subdivided. We would still require the city standard be constructed, but then there's the-
The remains.
The transfer over for the maintenance of it.
And then there's still parts that would be adjacent that might not be, that are still-
Or even left-hand right inside of the road.
Exactly.
Correct. Yes, yeah. Because typically, when a development comes in, you usually get what's called a half-street plus ten.
Ten, right.
So while it could be under county jurisdiction, I guess I was just trying to clarify that.
Yeah.
Even though it's under county jurisdiction, if a development comes in, it's still constructed to city standards. But there is a jurisdictional maintenance. We have an IGA with the county for the takeover, and there's minimum requirements that need to be met before we'll take on the liability-
Exactly.
-of the existing condition.
I mainly wanted that said for the public, because people see a road that's got what they would consider to be hodgepodge improvements, and that has a lot to do with the fact of the people who may be on the hodgepodge side might not be developing. Number two, it might still be under, a portion of it might be under county jurisdiction. And the other part, there might not be any development opportunities to fix it to city standards. And then there's, I remember the long and drawn-out reviews we had with the city about, in the county, about Beaver Creek Road, and how they wanted us to take it, and we said no, because you aren't going to fix it, and then they did fix parts of it. And so we took that over, and then some parts we don't own. So you can't just assume that, because it's in the city limits, that it's under city jurisdiction.
That's true. We've got several like that.
Yes, many like that.
And in the same vein of kind of a questioning, planned extensions of streets or roads and urban growth boundaries won't happen unless annexation happens. They're still county areas, correct?
Correct.
And so annexation has to occur for those planned extensions to occur.
Correct, yes. And I guess I just want to, you know, as I stated, we have another work session coming up, so, you know, to let Carl answer what he can. I think we'll have a discussion to kind of wrap up after we work through some of your questions on stuff that we may need to go back and do a little research on.
Right.
It's been quite a long, long process, but I'll leave it to Carl for now and then answer more questions. And I think a good way to wrap up would be, you know, questions you may have or next steps type of a discussion.
One thought, Carl, as you perhaps address some of the comments or concerns that the citizens had. You may want to just explain in the transportation plan what triggers these improvements that we're talking about. It's not necessarily something that people just decide to do. There's things that trigger those improvements to happen.
Okay. Yeah, I'm going to rely on somebody that actually recorded all the questions.
I've got, I've got some.
Since I scrambled, could not find any paper anywhere in my silly bag.
We had paper.
I think that if we took Todd's and we kind of worked in reverse order, Todd brought this up at, I can't remember what meeting we were in, the CIC meeting, I think, and I thought it was a good question. So if you could step back into the, keep going, keep going.
Figure four. It's the big dot map, right?
It's the, the one where we show the increase in traffic.
Nope. Okay.
Back one more. Right there. Okay. So, so that one kind of combined with the increased growth, I think what, you know, a lot of the people don't realize that area off Leland Road, kind of, kind of south off Leland Road, the area off Central Point, those big undeveloped parcels are all part of that area where that growth is intended.
You can leave the-
I don't have a pointer, I don't think.
It's somewhere.
Do we have a pointer, Laura?
Well, I can point to South End Road with this thing.
Right. Well-
He was talking about Leland too.
Other pieces of South End Road?
Really.
Give it to Laura, she'll have it.
So if you remember, there was a big green dot in kind of, I think it was sitting right in this area right here. And part of that includes, this is Central Point here before it leaves the city limits. So there's a, there's a nice subdivision right off of Central Point, right before you leave the city limits. But right next to that is quite an area that's planned for, you know, someday it'll be residential development. So that's, it'll connect with the area off McCord that's already developed. So that'll get filled in. And then out off of Leland Road, on really the south side of Leland Road, again, before you leave the city, that area right there has got a lot of development potential. And there is some infill work that's kind of going on. And I, do you remember, Carl, when we actually, in the TSP, you looked at what year numbers? What was it, 2000? You remember? Because I know there's some lag here. We've got some, there's been a lot of development in that area within the last couple of years. So that, that may be another thing.
Well, that's another thing. So the basis for this is the snapshot of the city in the year 2010. So I wouldn't have included any new construction-
Since then.
Since then. I don't know. I mean-
So the other question was just kind of, we're showing these bigger numbers, and, you know, the, the, we don't show a lot of change with regard to growth. And when I heard Todd ask that, I was looking at that as well, and just thinking that there's lots of ways to get, kind of, go north, which is where people are going.
There are lots of ways to go. That was going to be my comment is, you know, this is looking at net increase. This isn't looking at total volume. So this is how much the volume changes. So all the lines are indicative of purely growth, and where you have the whole South End area, there's lots of ways out of there. They do feed more to one point, but, you know, because this is dispersed growth, this isn't necessarily concentrated growth. They could use any one of two or three, four ways out, and they could get there. Again, this is peak hours, this is the peak hour number, and not necessarily a daily number. So I don't know. I'd have to go back and look at our reference table to see the 1,000 units. I'm a little surprised at the 1,000 units at the same time.
And what's the peak again?
I'm sorry?
What's the timeframe for the peak?
This is the peak hour, and I think in Oregon City, that's about five to six.
Five to six. So a one-hour window?
It's a one-hour window. And it's really, you know, this isn't the be-all, end-all of the analysis that we did for the plan. This is a snapshot, the intent of this graphic was to show you a snapshot of where the highest increase of growth occurred. You know, and we went through and did the analysis, we went through and did that at all the locations that we were monitoring, regardless of if there was a little growth or a lot of growth. As you can see on the next diagram, that showed that many of the locations in that area fell below standard, right?
Carl, can you talk about just the model itself? Because I think people do get hung up on, you know, I know that lot, and how many houses can they really stick on there? That, and we can go to that level, right? We were using regional models based on, I think we were using, based on land use planning that's been in place for, so again-
You know, the way, and I'll see if I can find the right map here, yeah. So you can see on this map, if I can get my cursor back, speak to me cursor, there we go. All right. So, so for example, here, these fat gray lines, those are the boundary of what we call transportation analysis zones. So we're looking at the entire, total growth within that boundary, even though the dots are here. This happens to be a canyon in this case, so I picked a bad zone. Okay, sorry about that. But, so the way the model works is it looks for growth inside those geometric shapes, and then estimates how much traffic is associated with that total level of growth in all the different parts of that neighborhood, and then assigns that volume of vehicle growth to the street system at several different points. A regional model is really intended to mostly look at the higher-class facilities. So it's got to get the freeways and the highways and the arterials right. It does, it does less of a great job in the lower-down facilities, the lower-volume neighborhood streets, and especially not the local streets. There really are no strict representation of local streets in a regional modeling process. Because what you're trying to find out is where the highest level of congestion is going to be, and those normally collect on those higher-level streets. In this case, we actually did break down the city. I mean, this, this is not, if you were to look at the way Metro does their forecasting, we actually broke down the city into a finer-grain level of analysis zones than the default for Metro. Because of that question, we wanted to get better assignments of the volumes on the city streets, and so we broke it down into a bit more detail than what was there. The land use assumptions are all basically predicated by what's in your comprehensive plan and what's vacant at the time we did the base analysis. So those, those numbers get allocated for that larger area. So here, you've got, you know, it's this, this whole area is included in one, one piece. And I think the thing to recognize, and maybe this hasn't been clear up till this minute because I just thought of it. Metro did actually make some assumptions about the growth in the South End here. So there is a representation of what, what the South End Concept Planning Area can hold in our forecasts. It's about 1,500 units by our rough estimation.
But we're not done with that yet.
I know you're not done with that, but I'm just saying, that's, that's the way they do it. They, they make-
That's based on current zoning for that property.
Right. Yeah, well, it isn't, yeah, none of this assumes zone changes. I mean, all the allocations that are in here doesn't assume you're going to go back and upzone the land to get more density. It's just whatever's permissible within the current zoning. So, and it's frankly, it's usually averages. You know, if you have a range of zoning allowed, it's usually shooting for some kind of middle ground. And that's the way these things kind of work. So, so in this, this end of the city, the south end of the city, it's, and people may be surprised by the size of the dots, but I think that's what a lot of those, that magnitude represents, is kind of a first step at what the South End growth could be. And frankly, when the, when you're going through the South End Concept Planning process, that'll all be revisited, right? Depending on the more detailed work that you go through that. But it's a normal thing, in my experience in working around the region, that Metro makes some kind of stab at what the allocation would be, because they're doing regional planning, and they want to make sure, you know, in, in South End has a couple thousand homes, but some other concept plans have five, seven, eight thousand homes. And those are very big pieces, and when you add them all up, it affects the arterials and the freeways. And so they want to make sure that's allocated. It'll be refined by the city as they go through their concept planning process. All right, I talked a lot there. I'll stop.
Well, if I could just bring up one of the things that I think Mr. Last was alluding to, is there are a number of streets, especially, I know Mr. Last represents the Tower Vista neighborhood, so along Leland Road and Pease Road, where there are very few sidewalks and curves and gutters and things, and in very limited stretches of those streets, have those kind of improvements been made. I guess, I think what would be helpful is if you could explain how we get from the current level of development to the planned development. What, what triggers those improvements?
Terms of identifying improvement projects?
Well, just what, what is it that causes those improvements to happen? This-
I think Tony's your man to answer that question.
Right now, there's a couple of ways that you do it. One is it's development-driven, and that's where you see that patchwork of infill, essentially, where you get, you know, no sidewalks on two sides of a new subdivision that's then built out with on-street parking, a bike lane, a sidewalk, and street trees and streetlights. But the other, north-south of that property hasn't come in for development yet, so those improvements haven't been made. You could see a larger project, like we did on Beaver Creek Road between Malala and Highway 213, where the city came in and made, made the improvement utilizing SDCs. There may have been some renewal funding up there when Hilltop was still open, or a part of, part of Beaver Creek was.
Yep.
You could create a local improvement district, which we have not done since, in quite, quite a long time. So, or you go out for some type of a general obligation bond, you know, some other type of funding source. So those are really, you know, how you get large street projects done, or you just wait for development. You save system development charges that could go towards some type of an improvement that's needed to address the growth, but that can't go back necessarily for existing conditions. System development charges are used to make improvements in your transportation system plan that address and accommodate future growth. So sometimes it's a, it's a mix of those. So in Oregon City, traditionally, we've, we've seen our improvements through development. Now, there are, as I said, a couple of cases where, you know, we've been able to put together, whether it's through grants or monies that we have available to us to do larger street projects.
Well, I mean, Pease Road is probably the city's best example of how curb alignments haven't quite, you know, aligned. Part of that problem is we have never done a concept plan on Pease Road. It's an old county road, and we've had developments along there, and I think one of the things that we'll do, you know, to try and get at least some similar alignments, is to do a small concept plan for Pease Road, and to try and make sure we get the rest of those, you know, aligned properly.
And for, for example, what you've, what we have adopted for Beaver Creek Road, as well as Malala Avenue, was not only the, the project that we did on Beaver Creek and part of Malala, but we also adopted, so it's a very specific street corridor plan essentially that looks at what should the road design be? Access management, you know, where can we consolidate driveways? Where should we look for closing driveways? Where can we get crossover easements on large lots that would, because by closing those driveways on your larger classification streets, you're able to, one, make them safer, two, protects, protects the capacity of that system by removing those, those conflicting left turns that occur coming in and coming out of properties onto the right-of-way. So that's a good example of where we've been able to come up with a street plan that not only looks at the build-out to make sure it's one consistent plan, no matter how many times the code changes in terms of a street design, but then also looks at other issues such as, like I said, accessways, pedestrian crossings, you know. So that's a, that's a refined plan that's one, that's a step beyond what you see in your larger transportation system plan, which is trying to address the large impacts and identify those key corridors and intersections in accommodating the next 20 years of growth.
So, want me to move on and answer some of the-
Sure.
So Christine Kozinski asked about our public involvement and whether we've sent notices to the county, areas along, I think, Holly Lane, and I, I'm not sure, Laura, do you know, does our area, has our area included mailing to those people as well, or has it just been all posters and more of that kind of involvement for those people that are outside the city?
We've sent out over 10,500 of those green cards to all property owners within our urban growth boundary. So that does include portions of Holly Lane.
But not all of it, but not, right, it wouldn't include all of it.
Didn't send any postcards outside of our urban growth boundary.
I mean, that, that seems like a reasonable request, Christine, so I think we, we'll maybe make that addition and include, because Holly Lane is included in it. I will say that I haven't been notified of the county's TSP, and they've been moving along pretty well as well. So there's a little bit of, both, both of those, we don't, we don't always think about that. We think about the areas in terms of our growth projections when it comes to outreach. It's kind of like, where do you stop? So, but I think Holly Lane makes sense, because we do show a project out there, so. That was the only question I recorded for you, Christine. Did you have any, was there anything else?
That's scary.
Okay. And then Paul talked about the South End, Butel Road, and I can't remember this connection through Metro's project area, and-
Green space.
Green space, and we have talked to Metro about that. There is some que-
There is some question about the counts and whether it's really warranted. I think the, the big deal is it's, it's a very expensive project and would consume a significant amount of our planned project funding. And, you know, as someone who lives off South End Road, I don't disagree, it would be nice to have another way down the hill. But it's a fairly expensive area, project. It's in an area that's got some slide potential and it's, Metro's not exactly excited about the idea of splitting what they have as one big green space now. So I don't, I don't know that that conversation has ended, but, you know, I agree, there's a fair amount of traffic load and I always felt like maybe the density numbers needed to be reduced to handle that, but we haven't fully played that out with the south end plan.
John, I think there's one other jurisdiction that would have something to say about it, which is the Oregon Department of Transportation, whether they would allow an access point from there if it was possible. And I say big gigantic if, whether they would allow even access onto 99E in that location. I know that there are driveways there, but Metro is going to be consolidating a lot of that and getting rid of those access points because they own it now and they don't need, you know, a driveway every five or 10 feet like it is right now. So, I mean, I would, I would have serious concerns about that part of it. And I'm just thinking about jurisdictional issues, let alone trying to get down on a slide area down to 99E. They're not, they're not, ODOT is not thrilled about additional access points.
The other comment that I heard from Mr. Edgar and perhaps John, you'd be the person to address it, is about speed. Obviously, there's posted signs, but there's kind of a disconnect. And Denise also mentioned, it may be posted at 25 or 35 miles an hour, but people exceeding that speed limit. And I know we heard recent public comment on the area on Peace Road, same issue where the speed limit's posted as 25 miles an hour and people driving 40 or 50 miles an hour. Any thoughts about how the city might address better enforcement of the posted speed limits?
Well, Public Works is, has been trying with some effect, I think, to, to utilize radar signs, to improve our postings of signage, to add crosswalks where they, they make sense and can still be safe. Kanema, I, Paul probably knows better than I do, I'm not recalling if it's got 25 mile an hour postings right now. Is it, no. So a lot of our, a lot of our neighborhood streets like that just don't have postings on them. So it's, I mean, on Highway 99, it's posted, right? It's 50 and 99, is that right?
Forty-five.
Forty-five. So, so anyway, Public Works has got signs, we've got striping, we've got those kind of things. Enforcement, they don't let us write tickets yet. We don't get to carry guns and we don't get to write tickets. You know, so I think, I think what I heard from Keith Conrad is he only got three complaints last year. We got, we get complaints. So, you know, I kind of wonder if maybe he's, you know, not writing enough tickets or, you know, but I, I think it is a balance. Obviously, that's a staffing concern and I, I don't know, know all the needs and resources to that. So I just, I just know that we, we get a lot of concerns about neighborhood speeding and, you know, there's flip side to that too because usually, I don't know, there's, those that get the tickets that aren't so happy about it. So I don't really know the answer to that one, but I can, we can ask him to maybe submit some kind of a comment or to that effect where we are.
I think that what you can, you know, what we have seen in some of the newer subdivisions that we've, that we've been approving is utilizing curb bump outs at intersections, trying to, you know, when you start looking at block length and intersections, intersection spacing, trying to avoid those long stretches of uninterrupted streets. You know, so those are some of the conceptual, conceptual design techniques that we can utilize. You know, it is, you know, it is, it is an enforcement issue as well. So, you know, there's multiple tools that are available. And I think it goes back to what Denise was, was kind of talking about, like on 7th Street, you see those speeds slow down because of the activity that you get, not only from the pedestrian, but the backing movement. It makes drivers more aware. You know, you compare that to something like Leland Road where, you know, traditionally we've had, you know, backyards built up to the arterial, six-foot fences put up. It's kind of a lot, kind of a, not a very public visible space and that tends to increase those speeds. You know, nobody's really parking back there, so you've got, you know, what perceived to be a very wide right-of-way and pavement width. And it is a challenge, you know, to try and come up with those design techniques in the newer subdivisions that we have now and how can those be applied correctly in some of our older neighborhoods or where should they be applied, you know, identifying those areas and what, what improvements can be made there. I think it's, I don't think one answer, one design is going to fix everything. It's, it's a multi-approach that you would see, something like if you're coming down Lynn, we have the new traffic speed indicator there, you know. And you do notice a difference of people slowing down once they see their speed. So, you know, it's an education, it's an enforcement issue, and it's a design issue.
Right. On that same issue, I think in a related way, and I don't know if this has an influence on, on your intersection design, but my observation has been within Oregon City, when people find that they're getting backed up at an intersection and their wait time is growing, they tend to look for a shortcut, you know, an alternate route. And they end up going through neighborhoods that weren't really designed to be an arterial street, but they're using it that way. So I think they're, they're trying to find a way around those, those intersections that you may have identified as, as red or yellow intersections.
Further comment on this?
Sure.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's part of the reason you have performance standards. Wow. I didn't think it was that great of a comment.
There you go.
Yeah, the reason, one of the reasons you have performance standards is that kind of a thing where you're pushing traffic in the places you don't want it to go. And so that's why, like on an arterial, you do your best to design it so you can manage that kind of congestion so you don't give what we call traffic intrusion in the places that it shouldn't be going. There are plenty of examples where you do your best and this, it still happens, even if it's for short periods during the day. You know, there's a host of tools out there for traffic calming in neighborhoods. It's has, it's a mixed, mixed process, you know, speed humps and circles and those kinds of things have been effective. You can see the before and after studies about how they do reduce speeds, but in my experience, it's, it's modest. You know, I think people have expectations that cars are going to go 20 miles an hour. Well, you know, the best, the most aggressive set of speed humps that I've seen, maybe it will shave five, seven miles an hour off of what a vehicle would want to go. But there are tools that are out there for those neighborhoods in those cases where you really can't solve the problem where you'd like to, which is on the arterials. So-
Well, I mean, one of the natural, I mean, I hear, I've heard Paul talk several times about Kanema. I mean, if you look at Kanema, you would think that would be just a neighborhood that would be, you know, it's loaded with natural speed softening, you know, geometric, I mean, it's steep, it's, you know, there's no straight-through route. Fifth is about the only place where, you know, someone could actually launch their vehicle if they're doing that. But, but all the other ones are just so narrow and there's not good sight distance, it's kind of, you would think that would slow traffic. So those things-
Not on 99. Where McGlaughlin-
Well, not on 99. But we're not talking 99 as much as we are the neighborhood streets.
Well, I, I think though, John and Carl, that there are streets in Oregon City, the two I can think of that are classified as minor arterials that go through residential neighborhoods. And just because they're minor arterials doesn't give people the right to drive on them speeding because they are residentially zoned streets. So there's got to be ways that we can look at, and I'm not saying we're going to pay for them and do them right now, but there's got to be, it's got to be better than what we're doing right now. And there's got to be some look at those to design them so that people can get to and from where they want to go, but also recognize that we're going through two historic districts with residentially zoned properties, for the most part, on both of those streets. And people do live there and it makes a lot of difference whether you're going 25 miles an hour or you're going 40 miles an hour. And back in the good old bad days, people would drive through Kanema like bats out of hell as fast as they could, you know, get through. And then the city started ticketing people and reduce the speed, but there's, you know, I don't want to see that part of Oregon City end up with the same problems that, that Linton has. And, you know, that's a four-lane highway. And there's no residentially zoned properties that above that street. They're all up on the bluff or they're nearby, but they've got school bus stops and other things that are causing some of that, that problem. So I think that we need to take a look at ways that we can be creative and come up with, because I think when I look at, think about the TSP, one of the things that I think of is livability. And how do you help move the traffic in a manner which is conducive and allows people to conduct their business, but that your community is still livable? So to me, that's sort of the $64,000 question.
Fair enough.
So are there other concerns or questions that we have for Carl? Damon?
Okay, this is a work session. This is a draft document, so these are editing comments. I guess we'll actually, we'll start with a different one. Could you go back to figure four, which should be back one? There's right at part low and south end, a red line showing highest growth in traffic volumes. And yet your next slide shows that by 2035, they've gone away. That area is developed, so I'm curious as to how they're going to go from a red line to a green-yellow line.
So, so this slide versus this slide? Is this, this slide is volumes and this slide is speeds?
It's your slide that says motor vehicle traffic growth.
Right. You see the little red line I'm referring to?
I see the little red line, yes.
Is that the one on south end?
Yeah. Got it. So I'm curious how that is going to be dealt with and why that little section is red and yet everything around it is either green or yellow? Why isn't the whole stretch red or the whole stretch yellow?
What's happening there?
Yeah, what, what's-
Is that by the church? Speedy church doors.
So that's my question. Maybe next meeting you'll have-
Yeah, I don't have an answer for you.
It stands out like the sore thumb.
That's fair.
Having driven that road, both part low and south end on a fairly regular basis, I'm curious what's different about those two blocks because they're basically developed at this point, so.
Good question, Damon.
And then they're not in here, so you may actually need to get this and/or one of you guys can answer it. But figure six shows the multi, multimodal street system and it basically shows the commercial, industrial, residential, yeah, I don't think you have it in here. Oh, there it is. Okay. And in particular, the area up around the Hilltop Mall shows mixed use, all that other exciting stuff. Then you go to figure nine, which shows truck routes, which isn't in here, and that area doesn't show any truck route usage. In fact, it's blocks away from any truck usage. It stops at Fehr. Now, knowing that Safeway gets eight to 10 semis on a, on a fairly regular basis during the week, Benchmade is there getting semis and whatever infill also might be occurring. Yeah, Freddy's-
Albertson's?
It just seems, well, Albertson's is in the truck route area. It just seems like that's, you missed a big chunk of truck route. Every place else that shows mixed use has some adjacent truck route usage except the Hilltop Mall area. And particularly if another large box store should develop there, it seems like there'd be even more truck route usage. So I'd like to know why that was excluded from the truck route, you know, plan. I understand why the things are, that are in the truck route plan are, it's just why is that one missing?
You're saying local truck route is missing?
Yeah, this-
Yeah, yeah, I'm looking at it.
So, so you're suggesting that it ought to continue down Beaver Creek Road?
Beaver Creek and Malala include Beaver Creek, Kane-
Should be more truck routes than what it's showing.
Kane Road.
Yeah. And basically Kane, Warner Millie, that loop right there should basically, where you show the blue around the word Oregon City should probably be part of the truck route.
The loop that, that goes around that shopping center.
I have it. And then figure 20, which you don't have. It's, oh, there we go. Figure 20 is a very interesting figure, which I like, but it seems like it has a very terrible title.
Figure 20.
It says, it's on page 70. It's a chart of, it's the proposed trend for safety is the name of it. The current trend looks like you're improving safety. And the implied TSP thing looks like you're decreasing safety. It takes you reading the little thing that says this is a fatality curve for you to understand that up is bad, but is somebody-
Do you want a different title?
Well, yeah. I mean, because you look at, you know, everybody goes, oh, look! And they never look at the legend. They look at the chart title and the way the arrows are going. So-
Which table is it?
Page 20, on page 70.
Page 70.
Yeah, I know. Like I said, these are editing and this is a draft document, so that's the time you fix these things that for the next 25 years, people are going to look at and go, it won't make it 25 years. I know that, but you know what I'm saying.
So, so the, the point there is that the blue line would give you the impression that safety's being improved when in fact that's the opposite of what the chart means.
Right. Yeah, I mean, if you read the legend, it make, it's clear that it's a fatality number and the fatalities are going up on our current trend and the improved, the TSP will decrease the amount of fatalities. But most people don't take the time to look at legends. They look at a chart and go, your TSP is going to make us less safe, is what it looks on the glands. And then the last thing is, is actually a comment that you made about the red and white colors. I really think you should go to green and red because when I read the charts, that's why I interjected, I read based on the title that white was funded and red was what would be funded if money became available. I read every one of those, those backwards because of that.
Right. And, and I would just piggyback on that comment. The term that's used there that means that there's funding available is constrained. And in my mind, constrained means it's held back. So constrained-
Do you have a better suggestion?
It just, it, it conveys to me the opposite. It says that you don't have the money for that, so it's constrained. The other one is planned, so that would indicate that since you're planning to do it, it's going to happen.
Yeah.
So the terminology-
You're completely wrong, but sure.
Well, I'm just saying, and I was in the-
We struggled with this. Because financially constrained is kind of a professional term.
I understand, and, and I mentioned-
It's used in the region, right?
It's used in the region because everybody has big long lists of projects, but they're not constrained.
Right. But my, I guess, I had the same reaction when I was in the stakeholders meetings last year, was that I was really having a hard time reconciling the terminology constrained because you were telling me that those were the projects that were funded, but in my mind, constrained just means we don't have the funding for that, so it's being held back. So it's, I think the same thing as that chart that Damon was talking about, it's conveying the opposite message to my mind.
Yeah. And I think if you change the colors like you suggested, green means there's money and you could even leave financially constrained, I think the, the currently white that says planned transportation project would be unfunded planned transportation. Then, then it's clear that you plan on doing it. If some funds drop out of the sky, we have another, you know, federal T thing.
Okay, we'll ponder for a while. I mean, the point, a couple of things remember that was mentioned when we were going through that. I mean, we're, a lot of the funding's coming from growth, so a lot of that won't happen unless growth comes. But development could come for other reasons, grants could come for other reasons. So all the projects around there really are legitimate needs.
Yeah.
And we don't deny that. Just a lot of them are in parts of the city that really aren't expected to grow much.
Right, but I, I think both Damon and I are- But I think both Damon and I are seeing the same thing.
Because if we do the funded thing, they were associating with that pot of money that's associated with growth. I'm just, that's why we struggle with this a little bit.
Well, that's, that's why I don't have a problem with the term physically constrained. Because that means when the money becomes available because of growth or whatever, then this, this thing will happen. Or could happen.
Right.
But see, that's the opposite of what you said.
No, 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 no.
Constrained or funded. The constrained one.
Let me finish. Let me finish. I don't have a problem with that term if it's also associated with like green, which means this is what's going to happen as money becomes available. Then we take what's currently white, planned transportation system project, and say unfunded planned transportation. That means it's going to take, you know, lottery winners or, you know, somebody to decide that that's.
The cash tsunami.
What, Moses Clearinghouse.
Right. So I think that, if you just added that and changed the colors, this, they all become much more correctly interpreted.
So can I take a poll across the commission and see if people are okay? Because, you know, we want to do this kind of once.
White's not working for me.
Okay, white's not working for us.
And it also makes it hard to see on here when you.
There's that. Fair enough.
Safe financially constrained.
And I think where we're coming from is that we're involved. And if we're having a hard time getting it when we're involved, then people who are not involved looked at this, they're going to go, I don't have a choice.
Yeah. Or hey, my intersection's going to get worked on, and they don't care. And then five years later, they're like, why hasn't anything happened? It was the wrong color, sorry.
Charles, when you were talking about these up here, you said, and both of you were talking, I was getting confused, you say, change the red to green? Because that meant what to you?
That there would, when money became available.
It might get done.
Because it is financially constrained right now. Because it's like this area up in Park Place, there's no money for it. And the white one, you wanted to see it changed to?
Red. Showing that there's no money available.
Well, there's no money available for the other ones either, because they're not, they're not even, some over urban growth boundary and they're not annexed, so there's no money for those either.
There is if.
If.
Right. But the others are, there isn't even if.
Yeah. This one is, it isn't even if.
Right. Okay.
So should we, how about maybe and not a chance?
You could put in parentheses, if we hit the lottery.
If we hit the chance of meatball.
Well, some of these are dependent on annexation. That's gone down for three or four times.
Well, yeah, well, some are depending on annexation, some is depending on money falling out of the sky.
Or develop an application.
Yeah.
Or.
Or they're already here, the guy just hasn't developed his land.
Well, you just brought up a very good point. The whole TSP is predicated on growth and utilizing SDCs. And we, and we know how reliable that is. Because we have a cyclical system, and when permits are down, you're not getting any SDCs, so.
And that's the reason I asked Tony at the beginning, what is it that triggers these things? It's not like the city has, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars sitting in the bank waiting to put into these projects.
Absolutely.
So they're waiting for something to trigger that. And it's usually some kind of development that triggers those improvements.
But without, without the growth, you're not going to see these intersections, the capacity being used up.
So are we looking at any other options besides, I mean, we don't know what's going to happen with safety, Lou. We don't know, ICE T will get reauthorized. We don't know about any of that. And I know that we have done projects because we've been able to get some funding. But are we, as part of the, you know, it's just like our other public facilities plans that we've looked at. Financing is, you know, the big elephant in the room, that we don't have the financing. So if growth doesn't happen the way we anticipate, and I don't think it's ever going to come back to the way it was, you know, when things were flying high, what are we doing in the meantime? How are we, what are we looking at? Are we putting any options in the plan that talk about possible alternatives that if growth isn't what we project, how, what are we going to do? If it's not going to happen?
Well, I think Tony said, if growth doesn't happen, then our capacities aren't going to be there to have happen. So, but, and the project wouldn't be needed. That's for the driving solutions. There's still the walking solutions that I think the community, I mean, really, through this, through this TSP process, it was clear that, you know, more walking was a higher priority. And I think we'll just have to take those on as, you know, as we see transportation system charges, you know, fill the bank and, you know, pick those off as, you know, priorities. And, you know, there's going to be a lot of decisions, I think, by the city to kind of figure out which ones can be done. Can we, can we see those projects teamed with a grant application, you know, and use some of those SDC funds to kind of help see that through to fruition? Can we use some of those projects with a pavement maintenance utility fee project that would make sense to add a piece of sidewalk then, or at least a curb? You know, that pavement maintenance utility fee was specific for asphalt. But is there some, you know, way to combine, you know, some SDCs with some pavement maintenance fee dollars or some gas tax dollars?
Is any of that discussed in the appendix or anywhere that there are these options that, I mean, I don't know. I just think that, you know, the thing that, when Carl was talking, I wrote down, hmm, big question mark. That, that's not sustainable.
Well, I mean, across the region, there's a lot more need than there is dollars. So, you know, I don't know. I think this is a hard look at, you know, at 2035. Who knows what's going to happen between now and 2035? We may see a big run in development.
We did do some analysis of the funding, and it's in, it's not in the volume one, it's in volume two. It's a funding analysis. And the city, I mean, there's no secrets out there. The city knows what their options are. It's a matter of whether the city as a body has the political will to go do it, right? I mean, you could easily, well, from a theoretical point of view, you could easily modify your utility fee to pay for other things. Right now, you've chosen to use, use to pay for street maintenance. It's perfectly legal, it's a perfectly legitimate mechanism to build other things through it. You know, there's other cities in Oregon that do it. You know, they fix sidewalks, they fix streetlights, they do all kinds of things with it. And the reason it works is because everybody pays into it. It's not just a growth-driven tool. You know, we have, so we have the list there. I think, I don't, I don't think we told the city anything they didn't know, though. But because it's one of those things.
This is in volume two, then?
Next meeting we'll talk about.
It's one of those tech memos.
Funding mechanisms and all kinds of.
That'd be fine. Yeah, it's a challenge. I mean, I gotta say, if you didn't know this already, I think your city's doing very well dealing with the maintenance side, the operations side. You're doing better than most.
Considering, yeah.
Considering, yeah. I mean, the street, the pavement management utility fee is, is a tool that Nancy came up with five, six, eight years ago. How long ago was that? I can't remember.
Two thousand and seven and eight.
Yeah. And it's, it's one of those things of recognizing that the traditional means of paying for that, the gas tax, was declining, the need was increasing, and the gap was increasing. And so that was a measure to help fill that gap. But I've seen it in other cities where they take that same kind of tool, because they're like, these are all our problems. You know, we can't just push this off on the growth. We, as a city, have to deal with this. And they make decisions about what that's going to pay for. And you'd be surprised how far, you know, $5 a month per house would go to fix, addressing those problems. It's fairly phenomenal. But it takes a lot of education and a lot of political decision-making to do that. It's, it's not an easy thing at all. And so, it's one thing for the consultant to recommend something like that, but it's a whole nother deal, you know, for that to get, for that to happen.
Do the other commissioners have a comment?
I've heard two words here tonight, and I'm going to take a chance here. Commissioner McGriff, that's it. Did I get it right?
Yes, yes. Yeah, I'll, you know, for you, Robert, I'll answer to just about anything. No worries. KU works.
I heard two words, speed and enforcement. Speed, speed, speed. Say nothing gets done. We don't do anything. In the meantime, we've got to ensure the safety and welfare of our citizens on our streets. And I think I'd like to see a real emphasis made in this plan regarding enforcement for safe streets. I mean, not just, I mean, a real emphasis. Because stuff like you got here is fine and dandy if it happens, if it happens. But we still have to enforce safety on our streets. And we have to, I'm with Denise. I think that speed, and Paul mentions it, you know, that's regardless of the improvements you make on your streets, you've still got to enforce that safety factor. And I don't know of any city around here that, on occasion, you'll see, maybe in a week, Westland or Oregon City will go after somebody and say, oh, they're out, you know? And they're making a real program. I got caught once, you know, by a candy cop. You know, they responded to Oregon City because somebody got a grant to bring all these policemen in and just concentrate on one city. And they were just swarming all over the place. But I would like to see in, in the plan, a real emphasis made regarding, in the meantime, while these things are being worked on, we emphasize safety on our streets and enforcement. And I think that would go a long way to give us credibility as a, as a community to say, we're serious about our streets and the safety, safety on them. Because in the meantime, you know, John's got a water problem, you know, to confront it, you know, get all that maintenance of the infrastructures, and that's going to cost a ton of money. And so, you know, if we had about, what is it, $240 million, we could solve all these problems. But in the meantime, you still got the enforcement.
That's a different set of problems. But yeah, sure.
I think that, you know, you know, there's multiple tools, as we were describing earlier when it comes to speed, you know? And there are some things that come out of new development, street designs and whatnot. I think when we, you know, I'm not sure that this is the proper document to really, to talk about police enforcement. I think that's a conversation that needs to happen with the city commission, you know, in terms of funding. You know, I think the police chief has made several presentations concerning crime, you know, the police he's been able to bring on in the last five years or so to increase our police force, the change in shift schedule so that we have overlapping officers during the, where we see the higher incidences of, of crime, you know? And it's, and it's really a discussion of prioritizing, you know, where those resources are utilized. And it's, it's a hard discussion, because we, you know, we still, you know, property crimes, physical crimes, assault, you know, those are always going to be the, the top main concern, you know? And it just goes back to making decisions. And so, you know, that's somewhat of a policy decision. It's also, you know, a discussion with the, with the police chief about resources available, how those resources are utilized and how they're used most effectively, and where the need is. I think in addressing some of the speed, you know, concerns about speed limits on signs or what's the set speed, you know, on certain streets, and John, you can correct me if I'm wrong, you know, under certain jurisdictions such as ODOT, you know, there's, there's a process that we need to go through in order to get that. It's not just the city commission passes a resolution and we change all the speed limit signs in the city. But we do have the Transportation Advisory Committee, which is a, which is a good resource to bring speed concerns to and, and start that conversation. Once again, I think it's to remember what this document is, and it's your 20-year planning horizon. And if we're getting down to specifics like that, I think that we do have other routes to address those now. And not necessarily, would be my recommendation, not necessarily put that in this document, which is really dealing with what are your infrastructure needs over the 20 years? Where are they? And what funding sources do you have available to you? It really does become a planning, a planning document that we utilize when development comes in, or when capital improvement plans are made, or we go out for grant funding requests and whatnot.
Tom? Go ahead.
Oh, and I was just going to say, you know, I think it's something we could identify, but I'm not sure that we're going to, you know, come up with a remedy, right? You know, we pass, this commission adopts something. It's not necessarily, okay, the police are now authorized to go hire three cops just for traffic.
Well, I'm thinking, what I'm really thinking of is that, I totally get that. What I'm thinking of is something in the document that addresses alternate design standards by which we get safety and comfort for pedestrians, comfort for bicyclists, a little more discomfort for drivers. I wanted to say comfort for drivers, but what I want to do is make them a little more uncomfortable so that they will slow down. So there's a, there's a cascading effect. So it's really what I'm after, seeing something in the document that could address, how can we design streets in new developments? And what are some techniques that we could use to retrofit older existing streets that would help achieve these same goals? So it's really, my, my thing is going to be more on the safety. My end result, of course, is that will help reduce the speed, but that's over here. But these other things could go a long way to making that happen without actually requiring the police chief to be citing more people, or, I mean, I want him to do that anyway. But, but that's what I'd really like to see in the document, if, if the other commissioners think that's something that would be valuable. Because I think, because I think we have to look at.
Less road maintenance.
Yeah.
More potholes.
More potholes, yeah. They do drive slower, but he's got that, but he's done so well with that pothole hotline that people call up and boom, there's some asphalt in those holes.
And they can drive so much faster.
So, you know.
But I think that's exactly what belongs in this document.
Yeah.
That's the tool in this document.
Well, we can, just to add to that, I mean, I, I think part of the answer is already there. Complete street guidance is, takes that into consideration exactly, where you can have on-street parking where you normally wouldn't, where you can narrow the lanes where you normally wouldn't.
And so does it apply to both?
It doesn't apply to retrofits. I mean, that's what you're talking about.
That's what I want to see in there, some way that you can look at retrofit.
Situation, and, and maybe there's some ideas we can put in there about, yeah, some other, you know, that doesn't take a reconstruction of the street.
No, but there's.
You're not looking for that, right? You're looking for lower cost.
Looking low cost. I mean, I, I, you know, personally, I would love to see a curb extension at one of the portions of the intersection at Ninth and Washington, because there's a church on one side, there's a church on the other side, and on the weekdays when they're having their activities, believe me, people don't stop.
Yeah.
And it would be just great if they could be out there a little more, be a little more visible, and maybe it would help people stop.
Look at that. Because, because I would agree with the comment that was made earlier, is speed, speed is a, is very much a perception thing. If you can alter the perception of the driver to make it look narrower or slower or less safe, even though it actually isn't narrower or slower or less safe, then that has dramatic effects on the way they drive.
I really like the, they were talking about the roundabout that they have out on Sentry Drive in Bend when I was living there, but that didn't get implemented till much later. It's made a tremendous amount of difference, whether the speed's been reduced or not, people slow down. There's the one in, as you're going through to get to Burnside and Laurelhurst, it's, you go drive and then you make that, it's slow. It's slow. Yeah. When you're heading to Thirty-Ninth to go to, to I-84. It's, it's made a lot of difference there. There's a lot of green there, you know? Sometimes putting a boulevard, you know, if there's streets wide enough, you put some, some planting islands. Again, that, that was sort of the goal when the McLaughlin Viaduct was redone.
Roundabouts are low-cost solutions.
The plants are dead, but it did sort of reduce the perception on the McLaughlin Viaduct that it is narrower. And people do slow down somewhat.
So Tom.
So that would be great.
Tom, you had a comment.
I was going to say that Thirty-Ninth and Gleason was so confusing, I got a ticket there, because I didn't know what lane I was supposed to be in. I was only joking when I asked about the path for the Beavers Crossing in downtown Oregon City. But I was wondering, because this is looking out till 2035, and I know we're only in the but I was wondering, because this is looking out till 2035, and I know we're only in the initial stages of, of the Blue Heron, but has there been any consideration given in a plan like this that future street improvements or path or walking in and out of that area? So that's not important to a plan like this at this point because we don't really know?
We don't know.
Okay, well, I just saw if we were planning out.
You've got to remember, this was, this was 2010.
Yeah, I wouldn't say it's not important, I would say that's the sandbox that TSPs are done in, they're done within, but the comp plan currently shows, it's, it's difficult to start imagining what could change when you're doing a process like this, but the, the thing is, the policies and some of the standards that the TSP has will have application there, but how that looks hasn't, hasn't been figured out at all.
I just knew with the emphasis that the city's been placing on Blue Heron and what we might do with that, I saw more potential there than that, but they're in Park Place and that, that's, the annexation's gone down three times.
Put Fifth Street back in?
Well, something that down Blue Heron, but I know that's a distance off.
The right-of-way of Main Street, bring Main Street back.
But anyway, I just thought, I was wondering why that wasn't included, sorry.
Any other comments for Carl? Christina had some.
Oh, I just want to say with Blue Heron, you know, with any zone change or comp plan amendment, that is the time to address the existing TSP, so there will be a process that looks at this.
Another one, okay, just wondering, thanks.
I don't know if it's Carl or Tony on this, but. Yeah, okay, well, John, I have a question for you. The, the concept of, I don't know, devoting SDCs or whatever to particular streets, like, for instance, Peas, which has a checkerboard, My Street, which has a checkerboard of crosswalks and, and not, is there an ability for, like, the neighborhood association to petition the city to say that SDCs in our neighborhood should be spent, you know, like, 50% of them should be done this, or for that matter, talking to the contractor to say, you know, we'll, you know, alleviate some of your SDCs if you will do connectivity projects within 500 feet of your project, so that they're not just doing their face, but they're expanding the connectivity.
I think before John answers about SDCs and restricted funds and how those are utilized and when they can be spent, you know, one of the things we, that we run out on those old county roads is that there wasn't adequate right-of-way to build, build an urban street. So even if we did want, you know, and it certainly, yeah, that's certainly something we could work with a developer on where, why don't you just finish these next two lots, because you're two lots away from the sidewalk and we'll have it for a quarter mile? You know, usually, what we run into quite a bit is that there's just not enough right-of-way. So then you're into a property acquisition type of a situation which, you know, between funding and the ability to get that property, you need a willing property owner, was either willing to dedicate it or sell it to us, you know, by the time we get through that process, but, you know, the time, it, it comes down to a timing issue. And that's where, I think getting more into a refinement plan, where you could identify, what do you want on X street? And then you know, okay, we've identified in these 25 properties where we don't have enough right-of-way, and then you start that conversation, it's, it's, it's a process, but you got to start with that plan that then identifies how you're going to move forward, you can utilize that for other funding opportunities, so it's just not, unless everything aligns perfectly, you know, it's not something you can just, oh, just go build that sidewalk, a couple more blocks.
Sure.
And I guess you talked a little bit about, you know, that the SDCs are for regional improvements and not necessarily project-specific when we collect them.
Well, right, I, I think the idea of associating the SDCs collected in a neighborhood with the neighborhood that they're in is not something that the city's required to do or ever has done. That's not to say that neighborhoods, I mean, for one, usually when we spend SDCs, we budget to spend SDCs, so with that budget is often a capital project list. And, you know, I think traditionally staff have been tasked with coming up with those projects, trying, you know, using documents like this to try and prioritize those things based on other things, whether there be a street project or a, a grant application that we're trying to pursue. And if we heard from, my guess is if we heard from all the neighborhoods, we would get a list beyond what we could even handle, you know, staffing-wise. So I, I, I think, you know, there's, there's, the budget review process, there's definitely, I mean, we, we, I sit through the CIC meetings and the TAC meetings, and there's definitely opportunities for that kind of input, and, you know, we listen to that, we try to, we try to incorporate that in there, but usually the, the requests outweigh the, the ability to get it done. So that's kind of, kind of where I'm at with that.
I just was looking for, you know, some, some way to kind of minimize the, the checkerboarding, I mean, especially, I mean, I'm, I'm up by the hospital, so I'm in old Oregon City, and it's going to be, you know, people are not, not as old as yours, I'll admit it. It's older than me, so it's old Oregon City. But, you know, so literally, it's going to be personal effort to, on individual landowners because they're not going to get subdivided any smaller, there, you know, maybe a house will get torn down or a new one built there because the old one's just too beat up, and that'll be the opportunity, but it, you know, it just, it's going to, you know, be a difficult.
Either going to be a city project or individual property owner.
And so I was looking for opportunities where it isn't necessarily that way, you know, having spread the love.
It's like Bob said, we only need, what, 240 million?
Right.
You know, we'll fix all the problems.
Tony, you, you had mentioned earlier, and I just wanted to throw that out as, and maybe Carl, you might address that next week when we talk about funding, the idea, is, is there a vehicle in the local improvement district where, let's just say hypothetically, a neighborhood came together and they said, you know, we, we've got a, a section of road here that's potentially dangerous, and we'd like to improve the road either for pedestrian or vehicle safety or whatever, is there a way that a neighborhood could maybe have a contribution from property taxes that would be matched by some of the SDC funding to, to make a local improvement feasible?
So the, the local improvement district is essentially a payment above and beyond your property taxes.
Right.
So you're essentially agreeing that the project is going to cost X, we're going to divide it by the 100 homes and each one is going to pay that amount of money over the next 10 years or whatever the duration of that is.
Right.
You know, could that be combined, you know, if it's, if it's an SDC eligible project, yes, if it's not an SDC eligible project, then no.
So I, I'm just suggesting maybe hypothetically, the neighbors might bear 50% of the burden of that improvement and the SDCs could balance the, the other 50%.
Yeah, there's a recipe there for.
And maybe they can move some things from the whitelist to the rent list by willing to pony up. No?
It was red and green.
It's all, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the list as it is today, snapshot this evening.
But you see the pink ones.
But that might be a mechanism that, that a concerned neighborhood could use to shift a project from one list to the other, but it means ponying up some of their own money for it, it's just not going to happen spontaneously.
So maybe we can get some closures, is there any other?
I have another question. I won't be able to be here next, at the next meeting because I'll be in Vancouver, B.C., so. I had a question on this list, I was going off the other one, the project list, and I was reading this, below, A, Table A below displays the projects expected to be funded by 2035, while Table B displays the projects which are not expected to be funded, and shows the short-term, medium-term, long-term, and I looked through here and I thought, gee, everything is funded. And I thought if I was to show this to a group of my neighbors and our, our neighborhood association, they'd think that, like, the Park Place thing, the road and extension is all funded, even though I know that a lot of these are dependent upon annexations and growth, and annexations have gone down repeatedly up in that area. So to show that this is funded, I kept thinking, and my way of, of describing it to a neighborhood association was that they hope to have it funded, but it's not funded yet, because it looks like the city's got a lot of money right now, if I looked at it, it all shows everything's funded. Isn't there a better way to say should be funded or expected to be or even in the, the dialogue up front? But right now, it looks like, wow, everything's funded, ready to go. You know what I'm saying? Am I the only one who caught that?
No, I, I looked over on the next column and it said short-term funded, but.
And I started, wow, everything's funded, we are full of cash here in this city.
We can amend that.
Subject to funding.
Subject to funding, something like that, even up front, all this is subject to a lot of different, as we've been discussing.
Well, this is, this is just one piece, we've got the water.
Yep.
Master plan, we've got the sewer master plan, we've got the storm drain master plan, and then we've got this master plan, and it seems to me that there ought to be some overlaps of when we're digging up the street, we fix everything while we're.
And I know, I'm sure that anybody watching on cable TV probably was shaking in their boots when you said utility bill, because they're looking at the water rates increase possibly and other things that are going up, even the price of just driving to work, and to hear that utility bill, it may be suggested for another means, I'm sure they're just going, no.
So look at that in, in perspective, I have some vague idea about what people I know in Portland pay. We have nothing to compare with, and what they'd also pay for garbage, I was telling them what I was paying.
But their response is, that's why we moved Oregon City, we don't live in Portland anymore.
Exactly.
That's not why I moved to Oregon City.
Well, I'm just saying that's what a lot of people.
Yeah, but then, there's no correlation, but we, we're not getting, we're not getting killed, but I could just tell you that.
Okay, well, maybe, I think we've probably.
Beat that worst, yeah.
Beat, beat all these subjects to death, and if, maybe next week, Carl, you could come back with some responses to our comments and questions, that'd be great.
A big bag of money?
And a big bag of money.
See what I can do.
Very large.
And so next week, we're anticipating that we would have had Part B read?
No, it's the code amendments, next week is the code amendments, it's something other.
It's the handout that you have, it's got all the struck language and these are, this, this section here.
Yeah, it's that.
Were these the ones that have been struck out, the ones that are currently in there?
Yeah.
So you would have, yeah, okay.
These are excerpts from our current code, they're not the whole code section, they're really just pieces that have been added or changed, and I think, you know, there's a, there's a whole section on parking, I don't know.
That's the section that's been modified.
That's the section I'm interested in because I read the postcard and then I looked up stuff online, so I will be asking questions about Seventh Street.
Very good.
Okay.
And everything's posted on our project website, octransportationplan.org.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you done?
You going to gabble us?
I asked him about business and he said, no, I'm doing business.
We still have communications with Tony.
I was good with gabbling.
I don't, I don't have anything right at this moment.
I move, we do.
You've communicated all you need to communicate.
I, I did, yes.
Oh, thank you for the note about, I got a thing in the mail about Blue Heron, that was very, very thorough.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn?
Denise did it, and I seconded it.
We're adjourned.
Thank you.